Welcome to the Albany Unified School District Board of Education Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 27th, and we're calling to order at 6 o'clock. Could we get a roll call, please?
Student trustee Shepard.
Here.
Student trustee Devdah.
Here.
Trustee Inkless.
Here.
Trustee Con.
Here.
Trustee Davidson will be here soon. Vice President Mahoney.
Here.
President Hopwood.
Yeah.
Superintendent Stone.
Here. Thank you, and now our student board members will read the AUSD Mission and Vision Statement and Meeting Norms.
Mission and Vision Statement. The mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. AUSD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student.
Meeting norms. Maintain a focus on what is best for our students. Ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed, treating each other, the staff, and the public respectfully. Endeavor to find common solutions to issues through collaboration without sacrificing one belief, one's beliefs, in what is best for our students. Make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening with an open mind while others are allowed to express their own points of view even if one disagrees.
Thank you both, and now Vice President Mahoney will lead the Pledge of Allegiance for those who'd like to take part.
I am the Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the breathing of its heart.
Thank you so much, and we're moving on now to item four, which is approval of the agenda. Anyone here on the board have?
I move to approve the agenda.
All second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and we are now moving on to item five, which is spotlight. We have a treat this week. We actually have two spotlights, and our first one is the Albany High School's Tobacco Use Prevention Education Program, which is TUPI, and Ms. Wheaton and some students are here to present, which I'm excited about. I've seen one of these presentations before and they are great.
You have, thank you. Oh, here.
Oh, yes, go to that one.
You can tell I don't do this very often. My name's Josette Wheaton, and I am the lead campus supervisor for Albany High School, but I'm also the site coordinator for TUPI. I've been doing it for about eight years. Awesome. I love getting to know the students on a more positive note, because as you know, when security gets called, it's usually not good news. So, with that being said, we just kind of wanted to come and discuss some of the things that we've done throughout the school year. One of them is that we've sort of expanded with elementary school and doing presentations with them, which is awesome. But I'm going to hand this over to my two ladies, and they can kind of tell you what we've been doing for the school year. I also have some props over here. I know we don't have a lot of time. They're really huge, but I would love for you to see them, so I'll kind of vanna white them while they speak, okay? Thank you. Here you go.
Hello, my name's Delena. I'm a 12th grader at Albany. To go off of what she said, that we started off with elementary schoolers. At first, I want to say some of the schools were very like, not to say happy, but they were, but like, I think our kids are too young for this. But, and I understand that, it might be like, no, my kids, they don't understand what that is, they don't know about tobacco, or whatever the case may be. But when we did those presentations, it was very much the opposite. It'd be, it was like, these little kids, and we're like, oh my gosh, you do know what this is, you know more than me, and I'm, you know, actually teaching it to you. But honestly, that was, I feel like that probably was one of my favorites, teaching the elementary schoolers, just because they're very open-minded, they are children, and it was interesting to see how much they knew, but also how much they're willing to know, and going off of that. And another thing that we have done, we've done some things like Take Down Tobacco Week, where we include this with our school, so we have like 10 to 15 minute break periods, and we'll set up, we'll have snacks, or little candies and stuff, and people do a spin and wheel, people will answer questions. This is a good way to kind of engage with the students and the school. And, want to share more?
Sure. Hi, everyone, my name is Faruza. I'm the president of TUPI. Sorry, I'm a little late, I had to pick up my little brother. I've been at TUPI for six years so far, since 7th grade, and I just feel like what we do as a club is very like beneficial for the city, and I feel like we could do more, and we've like worked to do that. We've hand, like, we've gone around to the buildings around the high school, and we've put up door hangers, just like giving information about what we do and like what our goal is. And we've, like she said, we went and did the 5th grade presentations, and we've come on here multiple times and did like public comment, and we've, I mean, and we're like all very qualified, we all love doing this. We like go to classrooms at the high school and do presentations as well, and then even our booths, like she said, we do that too. And we just talk about like the effects of tobacco on our community, on our school, on our students, even their parents, and we just talk about like what resources there are to help stop this. And we also let students know that we're not trying to like force you to stop, or tell you like what you're doing is like horrible, and you're like a horrible person for doing this, we're just trying to spread information about it, and just hope that through this we can like change like the problems that are happening in our society because of this. Does anyone have any questions?
Anyone on the board have any questions or comments?
No questions, but having seen your like full presentation at Ocean View, it's really incredible work, and I really appreciate how much you break down the information just from like what it is, what it does, and, you know, like, the one that I was in, you guys actually brought like vapes, and just, I think for parents, it was really interesting to see just how cute and easy they look, or like fun, and just how, you know, when you market these things so easily to children, it can, you know, cause younger kids to get involved in something like that, so that was really great.
Thank you. I saw your presentation at the high school a while ago in the PTSA meeting, and similarly, it was just so interesting, and I just love the way that you're reaching the kids, and they'll listen to you more than they listen to us, or their parents.
Yeah.
Really appreciate your engagement and your advocacy.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? No, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Now we have our second spotlight, which is our student board members' year in review, so that's going to be student member Devdah and Shepard.
Hi. Good evening, Superintendent Stone, Board of Trustees, and the community. Looking back on this year, I'm just so grateful to be given the opportunity to serve as a student board member and enjoyed every second of it. One of my favorite moments this year was seeing the various elementary, middle, and high school presentations where students performed, informed, and contributed, contributed to board meetings. Seeing the young students being able to collect, organize, and articulate their ideas and concerns amazed me every time. This year's, this year's huge accomplishment was hiring our superintendent. Being part of the interview committee that, that selected and hired our new superintendent was an experience that was both meaningful and an honor. Looking ahead, one area of improvement is increasing student input by reaching to a broader and more diverse group of students, not just those in leadership roles, for instance. Additionally, it is important to, important to ensure that information about board meetings is shared more widely throughout the entire school community, community, again, not just relayed back to leadership. For next year, I aim to collect student feedback and to turn it into meaningful actions and change in our district. Thank you.
Serving on the board for the past two years has probably been one of the most meaningful experiences of my life, and has become such a routine part of my life that I feel like a huge part of me is represented by my position as a student board member. I've heavily enjoyed collaborating with all the board members who have always supported my research and questions, and straight up just been always so sweet to me. One of my product accomplishments this year was delivering the Active Shooter Safety Presentation, and also had a lot of fun working with the Student Advocacy Committee to deliver the various presentations about high school, middle school, and the one about the elementary school, which will happen later in the meeting. Like Mackenzie said, it's been incredibly rewarding to witness the positive changes our new superintendent has already brought to our community, and our district, I believe our district is in strong hands. As I move forward with my future endeavors, I'll carry the leadership and collaborative skills I've learned while sort of serving on the board. And before I introduce the next student board member, I want to talk about student board member legacy, which is something Mackenzie and I learned about at the CSBA conference in the winter. Two years ago, I was given the opportunity to continue Allison's legacy, and I hope that what I've contributed to the board will continue to echo even once my term is ended with our new student board member. I hope our new S student board member will feel ready to come into this position with confidence, and if that's all true, then I truly believe I've succeeded in my role as a student board member. And with that, I will now introduce our new student board member who will serve for the 2025 and 2026 school year, Kunsal Chodak.
Hello, Superintendent Stone, members of the board, and members of the community. My name is Kunsal Chodak, and I'm so excited to be here. This has been like a dream for me for so many years, especially as Ayush mentioned with Allison and working with her. She was a great inspiration to me, and I hope to continue her legacy in the coming year. Thank you.
And you're not going that quickly, because we actually have, want to pay tribute to Ayush, and also welcome, Kunsal. We're so excited to have you join the board, and we just want to come over in your direction. So, we just wanted to say, thank you so much for everything you've done on the board for the past two years. Sorry, I realize I've got my back to everybody. It's been such a joy for all of us to have you, you know, just representing all the students, the amount of work you've done, the commitment that you've shown has been incredible. So, we are so proud of you, so excited for your next steps, and thrilled that you were able to lead the committee to recruit our next student board member. And we have something from all of us. We would like to present you with.
Very special.
So you get the crystal one, because you're heading off, and then we also would like to recognize our student board member, Mackenzie Shepard, for her so far one year of service on the board, and another two, which is very exciting, and this is just to acknowledge the last year. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And we have more coming to you as well, but Mahoney is going to be a few minutes late, but we have some other. Pass you away. Thank you so much, and we will, yes. So now we are moving on to recognition. 6A, the proclamation number 2024-25-10, recognizing June as the LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, and I think our student board members are going to read. Ooh. Just seen that. I've jumped ahead here, by the way, sorry, with the recognition, I actually, anyway. Yeah, so if someone could read the proclamation, that would be great.
Proclamation number 2024-25-10, recognizing June as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Whereas the month of June is nationally recognized and celebrated as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month in commemoration of the June 1969 Stonewall uprising in New York City, which marks the birth of the modern day LGBTQIA+ Human Rights Movement, and...
Whereas Albany Unified School District promotes diversity as one of its core values and fosters inclusion through the diversity of staff, curriculum, and community engagement, and...
Whereas AUSD policies requires the protection of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer questioning, intersex, and asexual agender, students and staff against harassment, physical violence, or the threat of such, and...
Whereas the lack of awareness and understanding of issues facing the LGBTQIA+ children and youth has contributed to a higher rate of isolation, depression, and suicidal ideal, idealizations or attempts, and...
As education regarding LGBTQIA+ history, rights, and lived experiences increases, understanding and cultivates acceptance of and respect for the LGBTQIA+ youth and community, and...
Whereas studies have shown that a positive school climate in which all LGBTQIA+ students are supported for being who they are is a critical factor in decreasing the risk of suicide, depression, and disengagement amongst LGBTQIA+ students, and...
Whereas AUSD recognizes that the most vulnerable members of the LGBTQIA+ community are youth in TK through 12, 12 schools, and they, and that they need to feel a strong sense of belonging and safety at every school site, and...
Whereas the voices of LGBTQIA+ students must be honored and uplifted in all areas of the district's work, including decision-making, curriculum development, and school culture, and...
Whereas June provides an opportunity for AUSD schools to honor the work of LGBTQIA+ people to achieve equal justice, equal opportunity, and equal rights, and to celebrate the rich diversity and resilience of the LGBTQIA+ members of our community, and...
Whereas the current political climate has witnessed a troubling increase in anti-LGBTQIA+ legislation, rhetoric, and policies across the nation that seek to limit the rights and visibility of LGBTQIA+ individuals, especially transgender and non-binary youth, and such efforts directly contradict the values of equity, dignity, and inclusion that AUSD upholds, and...
Whereas Albany Unified School District remains steadfast in its commitment to affirm and protect the rights while being in full humanity of LGBTQIA+ students, staff, and families, especially in times of heightened social and political threat.
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, proclaimed that the Albany Unified School District Governing Board of Education recognizes June as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, encourages all district schools to observe this occasion with inclusive and age-appropriate instructional activities, and will fly a rainbow flag at each school within AUSD throughout June to signify visible support and solidarity with the, with our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer questioning, intersex, and agender, asexual plus community.
Thank you both so much, and we've already recognized our student board members, so we can now move on to another student board member item, which is the Student Advocacy Committee Elementary Report.
Good evening, Superintendent Stone, Board of Trustees, and the public. Today, I'm here with the Student Advocacy Committee to present our elementary survey results. So, what is a student advocacy committee? We just gave our presentation a few weeks ago on the middle and high school, and we pretty much just are a student-run, student-led program that, a committee that advocates for the needs of every student in AUSD, and we meet every week when, and contribute, contribute to and initiate multiple projects throughout the school year. And this project, we went to all three elementary school campuses and performed site visits in numerous classes about four essential topics that will be shown in the next slide. Oh, here are the current members. I'm Ayush Devdah, I'm the president of the Student Advocacy Committee.
I'm Kunsal Chodak, I'm the vice president of the Student Advocacy Committee.
I'm Lucas Bai, a proud member of the Student Advocacy Committee.
I'm Colin Chan, I'm a member of the Student Advocacy Committee.
I'm Dexter Johnson, and I'm an 11th grade representative.
So, the key topics aren't showing up, but they are classroom instruction, classroom cleanliness, school lunch, and school safety. And we'll start off with school safety. Oh, there it is, there it is. We'll start off with school safety.
It's over there, okay. So, I don't know who added the animations, sorry. So, for, for our first topic today is what safety means to the students, and so students articulate that safety encompasses physical security, emotional well-being, and a sense of comfort within their school environment. And so, from some of their perspectives here, from, we took some quotes from the students. A student from Ocean View says that they expressed safety to mean not letting intruders in and telling us when things are happening. Another student highlighted emotional safety, stating that they didn't want to go to another school because of bullies, another day of school. And regarding overall comfort, a student from Ocean View noted the importance of adults ensuring they make sure they just feel comfortable. And so I hope these comments give us a first like little baseline of, me more clear essentially of how diverse the nature of safety is in our school district, and get some more student perspectives, and so, next slide. Where's the controls for this? Oh, hey, sorry. I used the laptop here. So, for how students feel safe, students identify key elements that contribute to their feeling of safety at school, such as consistently feeling safer in enclosed and supervised spaces, such as classrooms and the main office. The presence of teachers and friends is crucial for the sense of security, both physically and emotionally. And finally, a feeling of belonging and positive social interactions significantly enhances their overall sense of safety. And so, these factors highlight the importance of both our physical environment and the interpersonal relationships within our schools for making students feel more safe. And for improvements for safety, students also value, they value the feedback, the collection of feedback here, and so, we decided to give some suggestions on how we can improve safety at the school, such as, one student emphasizing the need for better communication during incidents. This was, there was one incident specifically that I'll have to talk about, which was the recent tsunami warning, if you guys remember that. A lot of students were a little confused, especially since they're elementary students and have phones, and so they wanted a little more heads up with that type of thing. And another student also highlighted that the impact of behavior in shared spaces, noting when people follow the instructions, like we were in a small, small space, they're on roughhouse, which sounds a little, yeah, obviously, but the main point here is that, I feel like, I mean, the fact that they feel so obvious to many of us here is just proof enough that this really should be done, and should be, I think, quite simple to implement. And so, students indicated two key areas of improvement, such as being better informed about incidents occurring at the school to increase their sense of security, and also suggested their safety could be improved through more consistent monitoring of roughhousing or overly playful behavior in the playground during lunch. This is more about, the feedback is for more direct direction for potential enhancements to our school safety protocols and supervision strategies. Thank you.
Our next area that we covered in the site visits was school cleanliness. So, let's start by what's going well, so we have like a positive start to this. At Marin, students noted that the classrooms, the library, and the office are very well-maintained, and they think it's the cleanest parts of the school. At Ocean View, again, classrooms and the multipurpose room, and the students specified when the multipurpose room isn't raining, or when it's not raining, the multipurpose room is very clean. And at Cornell, the classrooms, cafeteria, and the library are all things that were highlighted to be pretty clean. So now let's move on to what needs work. I think there's a very common theme amongst these three, which is the bathrooms, obviously no need to like be worked on, and we've talked about this a lot, that the bathrooms are clean in the morning, but then at, at the end of the day, they're not as clean. So we know that a huge reason for this has to do with the students themselves, and it's not on the janitorial or the custodial crew, and I just want to recognize that they are doing an amazing job. And just some more campus-specific ones. At Ocean, or, oh yeah, sorry, at Marin, a student noted that there's some graffiti in the bathroom. At Ocean View, students noted that there's trash all over the ground in the eating area, and like I said earlier, the multipurpose room is clean, but when it's raining, they've noted that it wasn't very clean. And then, again, at Cornell, the eating areas, the lunch tables, students noted that it wasn't, a lot of trash around and a lot of mess. So, our suggestions for improvement, for the bathroom one, we hope that bathrooms stay clean regularly, and we know that that is happening, but I think more importantly, that students are better informed on maintaining a hygienic area in the bathroom, because that's really important, and if the students are better informed on that, then we'll likely get cleaner bathrooms going forward. Just the Marin specific one, we suggest to remove graffiti immediately, so that not a lot of students are talking about it, and it's not just like this huge deal, and have zero tolerance for offensive graffiti. The student didn't specify what was written in the graffiti, but I do know that there has been some incidents of offensive graffiti at the high school and the middle school as well, so just getting that out of the way immediately, so that there isn't, students just taking pictures and sharing them, and like just getting it spread made this huge deal. For Ocean View, I think more outside trash bins for the lunch area, and then also maybe like a student-led campaign for littering. I know they have the Student Council at Ocean View, so maybe they could focus on trash cleanup. At Cornell, I think the, the thing that was in the last slide was talking about lunch tables, and I think just for that, just repair like, or replace like all the damaged lunch tables, and then maybe have some more seating options in like some shadier areas, and of course, the bathrooms same as the other three.
All right, sorry. All right, it's almost time for dinner, but I'm going to talk, be here to talk about a midday meal, school lunch. All right, guys, next slide, please. So, overall, so far, school lunch has been, actually been one of the district's, one of their best things, most successful things, with the most positive things said about them. For example, in this statistic, at Ocean View Elementary, every single student surveyed a school lunch. Maybe that's just bias in our survey tactics, but a lot of students have eaten school lunch. It's great that school lunch is free and accessible to everybody, but there are a few minor complaints about the school lunch, and just a few minute things that could be improved. Next slide, please. So, lunch quality takeaways. So let's start with the first one, orange chicken is the best. Well, well, that's a highlight, that's a menu item we should not remove, we should keep. Orange chicken, everybody likes. And to add on to that, school lunch is a very popular option, as I said before, every single student at Ocean View Elementary ate it, and at the other elementary schools, Cornell and Marin, over 80% ate school lunch. Most, some students said that they would eat school lunch on top of their home lunch, which is just like a good option to have. About school lunch, another specific compliment they talked about was the fruit. They enjoyed the fresh fruits that was given, and I guess they were just like more, but they just said the fruit was really good, fresh, and like the apples were crisp. But so far, school lunch has been nothing but positives, but some things that could be improved are portions, warmth, and the variety of options. So, for some students at elementary schools, they've said that school lunch is often not enough, like to keep them filled, and we would like our students to have the option maybe have a bit more food through maybe like a smaller, like second lunch, or snacks, or a snack bar, to allow them to eat a bit more. The warmth of the food is another common complaint for, actually, this is throughout all of the schools. uh, actually, this is throughout all of the schools, uh, highs. Uh, you guys might not know this, but I have two younger brothers. One is in elementary school right now at Cornell, and one is in the middle school. But one thing that I've heard from them both is that school lunch, uh, especially things like the pizza, are often cold, and when food is cold, it's like, not, it's harder to digest and just harder to eat overall. And if we could fix that, that would be great. And for options, at some of the ele, uh, at the elementary schools we surveyed, some of the students were either unaware, or the school just flat-out didn't have options such as vegetarian options for school lunch. And that is something that we should try to include, to be more inclusive of all dietary needs. So, uh, for solutions to these problems, for the portions ones, I, I rec, I suggested the snack bar, having like a place where you could just, like, get a few extra, like, small snacks or food to keep yourself full, or just the ability to get, like, a second smaller portion, for example, of the orange chicken that everybody loves. And for warmth, uh, s- something that could be implemented is having more heat lamps, such as in buffets or in other, like, uh, areas where food is, like, on display, and you get the food, and then you pay for it. And for options, uh, actually, this is one thing I like to, uh, call out the Albany USD Food Project for. Uh, at the high school recently, they've been including a bunch of new lunch specials, and those are always loved by the students. Even since they're limited, they're often gone, most of, most of the, they're often gone by the time I get there, since, uh, I have to get to school lunch pretty late. But those, like, the special options, if we could include those to, like, all the schools, elementary schools, middle school, I know this is for elementary only, but for all the other schools as well, that would be greatly appreciated. So, yeah, that's my take on school lunch.
All right, let's move on to learning. So, learning is best when it is interactive, meaning it's more effective and enjoyable when it's active, like a student at Marin said, it signs we can do stuff we usually can't, like experiments. It's also best when it is supportive, ensuring everyone gets it. That's really vital. As a student from Ocean View says, she checks on us to make sure we get it, which means that they really enjoy when their teacher helps understand the subject that they are learning. And when it's orderly, it's a calm and organized environment. Another student at Ocean View said, I haven't really had a class with good classroom control. It's still a bit chaotic, showing that we still need to work on a lot of the order at the school.
Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. Um, some complaints heard by students regarding learning at the elementary schools were a need for more engaging lessons, more classroom control, and an improvement in the inequality and lack of difficulty in terms of material for some students. Um, more specifically, one student said that it would be nice if their teacher incorporated more games into the lessons, especially into math. Um, another student talked about, he used that quote as well, but, um, how, um, they haven't really had a class with great classroom control, and it can be pretty chaotic. Um, another student talked about how, um, the classwork is pretty easy for some people and pretty hard for others, which is gonna happen when you have a single curriculum. But, um, uh, if there was more, like, challenging options for students where the curriculum comes really easily, that would be very helpful for some students. Um, so, these are the main points of feedback that we got regarding learning, so hopefully they're helpful for you guys. Thanks.
Might need to tap it again. It's like, someone put animations on it. Yeah. Um, so thank you today, members of the board, Superintendent Stone, members of the community. To summarize the key areas we discussed today, uh, we began by discussing safety, exploring what it means to our students, and how they feel safe and areas of work we can improve on. Next, we moved on to cleanliness, examining student perspectives and perceptions on, um, how clean and unclean spaces are within their schools and potential areas for improving. Um, following that, we went into student experiences with school lunch, including their opinions on the food quality, variety, and any other related concerns. And finally, we discussed learning, focusing on what makes learning engaging and effective from the student's perspective. And so, uh, next slide, please. Might need to tap it again. Yeah, sorry. Uh, oh, is it internet? Yeah, sorry. Um, and so that concludes our overview of the key themes from our student feedback. Um, and so we'd like to open the floor for questions that you may have and comments.
Alfred, anybody have comments or questions? Yes?
No questions, but, um, want to commend you on pulling that information together and presenting it. I always think it's so valuable when we're able to hear directly from students. And students from students is even better in terms of what's happening in, in, in the schools and what have you. It's always a different perspective, and, and, um, students will tell you what they want, which is always great to hear. So I truly appreciate it.
I think everything that Vice President Mahoney said, but, um, I think the one thing that really stuck out to me was the, the food portions. Um, I, I think there's enough data to show that, you know, if you're hungry, you're not gonna be able to learn well. Um, and, you know, I had seen the food portions myself, but I thought maybe it was just my opinion that it was, like, not enough. So to hear it directly from students and actually see it highlighted, and that's something that I don't think I've seen brought up in any of the previous reports that we've had specifically on the elementary. So, um, it's definitely an area that I think we need to look at. Um, and then also for the vegetarian, um, option, I think what is really tricky about at least the elementary sites that I have noticed is that we just have a Google form that goes out, like, the day, but, like, I don't know if it's like the week before or something, but it's, it's just like, if you miss it, you, you're kind of out of luck. And so I think there needs to be a better way to make sure we're making vegetarian food more accessible for all students. Um, but yeah, those are just kind of like my general thoughts. Um, really appreciate everything that you guys did. Thank you.
Any other board comments?
Um, I thought you guys were really, really thorough on this. It's like a little sad that we're still having problems around our bathrooms. This seems to come up every year. So I, no, but I really hope that we can make some headway on it in the near future. Um, I liked what you had to say about, you know, how students feel about safety, because it's really important for us to know how they're feeling. We do the, um, California Healthy Kids Survey, the chicks, but, like, I've seen that data get totally skewed by kids, and so it seems like you were able to get a better actual read on how they feel, and I loved the comments. Um, one thing that I think is challenging is to, like, listen to how kids feel about classroom management and the curriculum, and that can really impact safety. So I think if there are any specifics, it would be great for that information, um, to get back to Superintendent Stone, just so we can make sure that we're supporting as needed in those areas. And I will totally support more snacks provided for kids in school. I literally emptied my own lunch today and was like, oh, lucky you guys, I have four granola bars and three tangerines to, like, give kids more snack, because they're, they are hungry, and there's a lot of families that just have a hard time. So thank you guys for highlighting all that and all of your hard work. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, very much appreciated. Thank you all. So we are now moving on to, uh, item eight, which is public comment for matters not on the agenda. Um, if you are in our virtual audience, you could raise your hand. And if you are here in person, please approach the podium. Um, it's two minutes per speaker. And just to let you know, um, as you're probably aware, the board is restricted by the Brown Act. We can't respond to any public comment. But, um, if you email us at boardofed@austk12.org if you'd like a response, that's, please feel free to do so. Um, but yeah, feel free to approach the podium.
Can I just, on that last item, sorry, I just want to make sure that we state that we will be uploading the presentation to the agenda. I, I can't find the attachment, but just so that we state that.
You're right. It wasn't there yet. Yes, yes. Go ahead, sorry.
Hi, just, oh, sorry, I didn't see the timer was going. Um, that was really inspiring. I love coming to these meetings and hearing what the youth are doing. Um, yeah, so just shout out to the youth. Um, so a couple of weeks ago, we got an email from the superintendent about some racist, racist comments at a baseball game, and I just appreciate the district's response. You gave the details. You know, I understand that some of the specifics couldn't be included, but we know that, you know, you took action, that, um, you know, that you did what you could. Um, recently, last week, there was an email from, um, the superintendent regarding posters that were called deeply disturbing, threatening, and anti-Semitic. But not enough info was given, and this email caused panic in our kids and in our neighbors. I can draw from the email that these posters were about Palestine. And I just want to remind the board that it is actually anti-Semitic to claim that all Jews are offended by criticize, criticism of Israel. Many welcome it. Um, as a, a USD parent, I teach my kids, my kid about the horrible things of the past. I teach him about the resilience and resistance of its ancestors. I also teach him that his feelings matter, but they're not the most important thing, that sometimes understanding something makes us deeply uncomfortable. In the email, it said, "We are united against hate." What I understand that to mean is never again for anyone. I don't think it means calling the police on people who you don't agree with. While I don't know what was on the signs in question, we have the right to see them and determine for ourselves. There's a current straw man argument that equates criticism of Israel with antisemitism, and I think the board should be aware of that. So, um, I don't deny antisemitism is real and horrendous, but at this moment, false claims of it are being weaponized to continue real and horrendous crimes against humanity. Also, June 7th, Bay Area Teach the Truth Zen Project at the Berkeley Shell Mound. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Would anybody else like to make public comment?
Can I give her my time? I'd just like to follow through on Amber's, uh, comments, uh, that, uh, a complaint was made about posters that were not on campus. They were off-campus. And if indeed that's the case, then approaching the police or, you know, the, the city authorities is one thing. Uh, but to say we're not going to accept it on, uh, Albany Youth, Albany Unified School District property, uh, it's sort of pointing fingers at people in the schools, either students or faculty or whatever, as the likely culprits. And in today's America, to even start to accuse someone of antisemitism before we've decided whether it is antisemitism, uh, is quite dangerous. We've seen, uh, it's Trump's America. Uh, people who are illegally in America abducted in the streets because of what they said, and somebody didn't like it. Somebody thought it was either antisemitic or anti-American. And so it was, um, if anything, not clear enough. And, uh, to some degree, we did go out and take a look at what seemed to be the posters. All of them were, uh, criticisms of Israel. A lot of them was tactless, but there were criticisms of Israel, of the government and the policies the government is pursuing. There was nothing that I saw that was antisemitic. And I know we all have a sense of what antisemitism is, but I have studied it a great deal. At one time, I was teaching the antisemitism lecture at Sonoma State University, uh, in their genocide and Holocaust, uh, series. And, um, I did some, uh, the background, and that's, it's certainly a battle today, is, is statements and criticism of Israel, in particular of its policies in Gaza, uh, can that be called antisemitism? And if so, can it be, uh, canceled?
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be here, and I also like to make, I was a lifelong teacher, K through, K through 12. So I'd like to also thank the young people for stepping up in this, in this, in our town. I'm a resident of Albany, and, um, I had a neighbor that also received one of those emails, and sometimes I watch her children, and she was very concerned about it. And I'm deeply, and I am also deeply concerned as a teacher about the lack of transparency that was kind of reported about these antisemitic posters. Um, I think the district is really, truly committed to combating hate, and I know that about all of you. And otherwise, it appears to be another example of conflating antisemitism with anti-Zionism, and it kind of suppresses Palestinian advocacy. It endangers the Jewish and Palestinian families, and also leaves the students misinformed. And like, my friend's kid was, was afraid, and didn't even know if she wanted to go to school the next day. Um, how can we teach our kids about racism when you hide key facts? Because everybody knows about those posters. So why don't you just tell us what they are, what it said, what's the big secret? And there's a genocide in Gaza. We all know that. It's supported by the United States. And if education has any purpose, it must be foster, foster honest dialogue, not silence. Transparency is the bare minimum. Release the posters' content now to everyone, just like you did in the email. And also, I would like to say that, um, um, I hope everyone understands the concern that the community has. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
I'd just like to quickly add, as a Jewish woman, that calling everything antisemitic is, really diminishes when something is really antisemitic. Um, to criticize our government or the government of Israel is just free speech and concern about genocide. And when I was in school and learned about the Holocaust, it wasn't considered offensive to talk about that in front of Christians. Uh, and I don't think discussing, um, what's happening in Israel and in Palestine should be just talked about as something that's happening in the world that may not be real, and it is real. And I'm offended as a Jewish person when people name everything as antisemitic when it's not. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does anybody else here in the public have comment? I'm not seeing any more, but we do have two in our virtual audience. Um, so I am go ahead. I'm mitted talking for Lucci. I think you're muted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Hi. Um, I'm also a resident of Albany, and I just wanted to say that I am also gravely concerned about antisemitism, particularly the kind that annihilates an entire population under the Star of David, and insists that that is the totality of Judaism. I'm actually Palestinian, um, and today, I found out about this meeting from a friend. It's hours before I found out about it, my friend who's in Gaza texted me that the house next to hers had been bombed, and that her family was pulling bodies out from under the rubble. And if you have children, if you love a child, whether or not they're yours by blood, I don't really know how we could prioritize the feelings of children in an incredibly safe and beautiful and welcoming place like Albany over the very real annihilation, the Holocaust that's happening with our tax dollars. Instead of going into our education system, instead of going into parental leave, instead of going into healthcare, we are bombing children. We are burning them alive. We can see it on Instagram, on YouTube, on every news channel outside of the United States every single day. And I'm so disappointed to see an email from the school district saying that people felt unsafe. So is what the posters said. I would love to see, because I've seen posters on the lawn, and what I saw were posters that said, "We stand with students." Sophie Scholl would have been part of the encampments. The white rose of nineteen forty-three made the way for the encampments of twenty twenty-four. And if you don't know what those things are, perhaps you should look them up and educate yourselves before you send out another email like that.
Thanks for your comment. Um, I am now going to move on to Sid. I think you're muted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Good evening. Uh, yeah, I've been an adult educator for over 30 years, and I've always believed in the idea of really critically thinking about what we teach and how we teach and really understanding. And when I saw the letter, a neighbor showed me the letter from the school district. I live next door in El Cerrito. But I saw that letter, and I had seen the posters. But my first question was, there was no, there was nothing attached to this letter. So it was like the school district was the arbiter of what is anti-Semitism. And it alarmed me because, as other speakers have suggested, right now, um, that has become a buzzword, has become used to weaponize and to silence speech. And so I'm very concerned by that. And, you know, I'm, I'm also Jewish. I'm a Jewish parent. I raised my daughter. She went to Jewish summer camps. She's, you know, she struggles with what's happening in the community, but she also recognizes that there is a genocide. And, um, and she also understands that safety is mutually bound together. Um, it's not just about Jewish safety. So I, I'm so disappointed. And I did, I sent a letter and I received what seemed to be like an AI response from the board. It didn't really say anything to me, even though you mentioned that we can get a response. That was like a zero response. So I hope that you'll actually reveal the documents that you are suggesting are anti-Semitic, so that we could actually review that. And maybe you can get a better understanding of what is and isn't anti-Semitic. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comment. Um, we have one more, um, for the public and our virtual audience. So I'm gonna, here we go. You should be, I think you're muted. There you go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to address the board and the superintendent today because a friend and a parent in the AUSD, um, community showed me the emails, the mass emails that went out last week to students and to their families. And I'm very concerned that you've made unsubstantiated claims of anti-Semitic hate speech when, one, you did not show the families and students the actual posters that you were informed of secondhand. And number two, you say in the emails that these posters were not found on campus, but rather in the city or, I don't know, neighboring cities at large. And furthermore, from what I have heard from friends in AUSD, um, parent friends, um, your response to other hate speech against other groups in the past have been dismissive or lukewarm at best. And this leads me to conclude that this is just another effort on your part to suppress free speech when it comes to Palestine. And rather than creating a safe and inclusive space for everyone, maybe you're creating a chilling effect on campus for any, anyone who wants to speak up for Palestinians or maybe who are simply existing as Palestinian students. And I think you can't just vaguely refer to anti-Semitic hate speech, so-called hate speech, without showing us what symbols or what words, you know, you supposedly found. And you mentioned that hate, bigotry and intimidation shouldn't be directed towards any individual or group. But it makes me wonder, because it's often the case, like, did these posters describe facts about the ongoing genocide in Gaza? Like, did it advocate for the life and freedom of Palestinians? And is that being construed as hate towards another people, towards Jewish people? And if that's the case, please check your racism. And then, or did these posters criticize the states of Israel or our own United States?
Thank you, sorry, you've reached your time, but thank you so much for your comment. And I am now seeing another, um, public commenter, so on, on our, in our virtual audience. So, go ahead, you have two minutes, and you are currently muted.
Hi, I am an Albany parent and community member, and I'm also, um, here to make comment about the publication or the email that was sent last week by the board in regards to posters of alleged hate or bigotry, um, in the community at large. Something that was really striking to me in this email was that you managed to not at all mention Palestine, Palestinians or Gaza um, in this communication, which serves to stifle dissent, discussion, um, everything around this topic. Um, I think it's, it's really incredible to me to, to kind of be able to do that and, and claim, you know, that, that this is a, a topic that needs to be discussed in the community and then not discuss it. Um, it also was striking to me that you talk about your sphere of control, your sphere of influence. And I think it's so important as a school district, as the board, to recognize your sphere of control here and allowing students, families, everyone to be able to discuss these topics and not to police, literally police dissent um, in, in calling on Albany PD. Um, like other people have mentioned, you know, you don't mention anything that was said, um, or what these posters allegedly contained. So we don't know what, what these claims are about or, you know, what threats were allegedly made. Um, or whether or not it's merely discussing this ongoing genocide of Palestinian people is considered somehow to be problematic. Um, I would really encourage the, the board, the community, the schools to facilitate discussion around this with the students and families, because obviously it's very important.
Thanks for your comment. Okay, I'm seeing no further public comment, either virtually or in person. So we are going to move on now to the next item on our agenda, which is number nine, approval of the consent calendar. Anybody on the board have any comments I'd like to make about the consent calendar or any questions?
Um, I just see that we are approving a couple field trips on here. I just want to make sure that we, sorry, Camp Campbell a couple of years ago ended in a really, uh, like an emergency situation. So I just want to make sure that as we're approving it, we've been thoughtful, and I just wanted to make sure that you knew. We had kind of said, there was conversation that maybe we shouldn't send the students because there was really bad weather forecasted, and we ended up emergency evacuating all the students. Yeah. Um, and there weren't like really good protocols on, and I've seen this twice now with sort of Slide Ranch and Camp Campbell. And so I really just want to make sure that we have a clear agreement on if there is something that's that much of a safety threat, that our students don't go and we don't pay. Um, that's out of our control. Um, and I love that our Cornell fifth graders are gonna go to the Walnut Creek Pool. I think that's a fun field trip. We do have a pool in Albany. So I, you know, I mean, I think it's fun to go somewhere different, of course, and give kids those, but I also do kind of wonder about.
Staycation.
Yeah. Um, about that. And in that, just, you know, we've long talked about utilizing our own assets to their maximum. And one of those is that we have an aquatic center. So that's, those are just my two comments.
Thank you. Anybody else on the board have any comments or questions? Sorry.
I guess, um, adding on to what Trustee Davis didn't just said, but the trip already occurred, so why are we approving a field trip?
2026, I think.
Oh, okay, okay, 2026. Sorry, that's what I was like, that's what I was like, why are we approving something that already happened? So, um, okay, never mind. I take that back.
We are ahead of the game this time around. Anybody in our, uh, audience have any, uh, comment? The consent calendar? Not seeing any, so anybody like to make a motion to approve it?
I move that we approve the consent calendar and look forward to just hearing that feedback.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, the consent calendar passes. And we are now moving on to, uh, staff reports. We have the preliminary budget assumptions for 2025, 2026. Which is going to be our CBO, Linda LeWu. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, student board members, superintendent and also executive assistant to the superintendent. Um, I'm delighted here to actually share an update with you guys to be transparent about where we are with our FY26 budget development process and some of the underlying assumptions that we're using to kind of build that budget. But before we get started, if I could go to the next slide, please. I want to acknowledge that AUSD has gone through a lot of transition in the past just year. Um, the superintendent joined in December. I'm just a little bit shy, a few days shy of two months being here as your new CBO. Um, and so I want to make sure that I have an opportunity to acknowledge that. And that's partly why we're actually doing some things right now, going through the cycle in March, when it should have occurred earlier. Next slide, please. So this is where we are. If we were running track, we would have lapped ourselves. We're back, we're right back at a budget adoption right now, um, of which at this point, we anticipate we will take to the board June 17th for board approval of the adopted budget. But prior to that, we'll bring an update on June 10th. Next slide, please. I just, I won't go through all of the details here, but this is a sample timeline of a budget development cycle that typically starts in the month of November. Um, so without really calling out the call box that's there, I light it in yellow. We're basically really late right now because we kind of picked up the cycle that should have started in November in late March. Um, so right now, we're kind of scrambling to, to really finish up that process. Next slide, please. So in preparation of a budget development cycle, typically we get advice from other professional agencies that takes the governor's budget and dissects that. School Services of California is an agency that we've used frequently to kind of provide that level of update and advisory on one of some of the assumptions that we should be including in next year's budget. You can see in the table in front of you, um, that with the, there's a column there that says SSC advice, and you could see that what the governors may revise that we just found out about, uh, last week. We're scrambling to implement that right now. Uh, but in light of that, they're basically only advising that we move forward with projecting a budget at revenues with a 2.3% COLA, while we're kind of proceeding with caution with all of the other items listed here. Next slide, please. So in addition to like the recommended increases in COLA that they typically provide, they also advise you on like the consumer price index that they're referencing as like the California CPI. So just basically, the cost of things are going to go up. And to their best knowledge, they provide a recommendation to us on what we want to utilize for that. We've also started practicing this year, though it's kind of late as well, is also working directly with all of our budget leads, our principals and so forth, to ask them and get insight and feedback with regards to what are the things that they need? What are the resources that they need to really produce a realistic operating budget for next year? And so we're quite pleased with starting that effort this year. We look forward to continuing that throughout, throughout the next year as well. Next slide, please. The federal government, there's been a lot of uncertainty that you've probably heard on the news with regards to what the federal government is doing to us right now. And I just want to share that one of the things that we know for sure is that the Title III funding has been removed for next year's budget, and that amounts to approximately $100,000 of federal funds for next year. Everything else, for the most part, as it relates to federal funding, we're good for the most part for next fiscal year. The subsequent years is what's kind of unknown right now, that where we would leave a question mark. We're just not sure. Next slide, please. So now we start to get into more of the meat of the, uh, of what assumptions we really use. And we want to start off basically by highlighting enrollment, because without our students, you know, this is really why we show up every day, right? It's because of our students. So let's talk about the enrollment assumptions. So in the current fiscal year, our Cbeds data reported that we had 3,694 students. And we're projecting at this point, uh, with some solid information right now, that we, we are on, on the path to hit 3,804. And with that said, there's going to be additional requirements for additional resources, right? We also generate more revenue from that, but we're also anticipating we'll also have to spend more. In light of the revenue, the COLAs that we've been using is 2.3%. As I mentioned in the previous slide, that was the recommended COLA rate. In the subsequent years, though, it's still kind of unknown. Typically, as a practice, best-known information as of today, we watched an SSC, you know, webinar last week that basically says a multi-year projection is a projection based off of the best information at this point in time. And right now, this is the best information that we have. So you can look forward to us doing a multi-year projection outlook with COLAs 3.02% in FY27 and 3.42% in FY28. Going into the expenditure line, for the most part, um, aside from the typical step and column increases in salary lines for our staff, you will also, we are also estimating a 4% increase in our medical benefits. Um, other changes, as you're aware, is like, uh, we've gotten high demand basically for our TKers. And so for the most part, um, on top of that, the state has actually updated the adult-to-student ratio from 2 to 24 to 2 to 20. So that also is shifting the change in the requirements that we need, you know, for a staffing perspective. Next slide, please. Going into the enrollment projections, uh, I'm trying to maintain some continuity with what our interim CBO has provided in the past. I want to continue that effort. It's super helpful, I think, to be able to see kind of like a multi-year outlook on what we're projecting for enrollment figures. You can see at the Cbeds, the first column has 3,694 students. Our enrollment, um, that we're projecting basically for '25, '26 is 3,804. It looks like we're gonna be relatively flat for the next couple of years. And then, you know, when we do our next budget revision, I think we'll have a better outlook and projection for what the subsequent future three to five years may look like. Next slide, please. The favorite part, right? So what does that mean in terms of dollars? So please keep in mind that the governor's budget, May revise just came out last week that we got an update on and some recommendations on. Um, the challenge that we always face is that school districts are required to adopt a budget basically before the state does. So we have to go off of the best information that we have to develop next year's budget for now. Um, I will walk you guys through this part. So revenue, how much money are we gonna get? And then how much are we planning to spend, right? So these are all speaking in terms of all the increases to revenue and also increase to costs for next year that we're projecting. So right now, our total revenue is expected to increase by $3 million. And on the surface, if we cut off everything else below that slide, we'd be like, great, right? We'd be clap happy, celebrating, we're getting extra $3 million. However, sometimes things happen and reality is, right? And with that added cost, added enrollment also have, you know, added needs for, you know, resources for staffing and operating support and so forth. So when you look at then the total expenses, you can see that just step and column is about a $430,000 increase. Health and welfare with the FTE growth is about $920,000. Uh, not health and welfare, I stand corrected. That's actually the salary increase, uh, in cost. The next line talks more about the benefit cost, because it's such a high cost. Um, is the added cost is gonna be $325,000 just purely off of a 4% increase estimate. And then, um, the added health and welfare cost from the FTE increases is gonna be $660,000, and then other classified is 300, and then the increase in the special ed program is $540,000. So you could kind of see with this walk down how quickly, actually, we could end up basically, you know, accounting for the full amount and then some of the added revenue that we plan to put in the budget for next year. This is just a little bit more of a write-up of the detailed, you know, assumptions that we discussed, um, with regards to increases, the ratios, some of the things we've already highlighted. But for the most part, these changes will increase budget constraints, requiring careful planning to maintain fiscal stability. planning to maintain fiscal stability while meeting student needs. Puts challenges in place, so just wanted to reemphasize that part. So what can you expect? As I mentioned earlier, the may revise came out, we have to adopt a budget before the governor does. So for the most part, we're doing the best we can to, we're still combing through some things. We plan to come back to you on the June 10th Board Meeting to have a more robust update with regards to a preliminary true picture. We're still moving some things around and still analyzing some of the figures, but by June 10th, we will have a complete picture draft to present to you and to review in addition to the LCAP update. And then we're also basically asked that the Board approve our adopted budget come June 17th. So with that said, I'm asking for questions. If you want me to go over anything that we've reviewed for further definition, I'd be happy to do that. If I don't have the answer, I can write you later.
Thank you. And I'm actually going to take public comment first this time. If anybody here in person would like to comment, nobody, and I'm not seeing any in our virtual audience either. So anybody on the Board have any questions to start with?
Sure. I've got sort of questions, sort of comments. Saw the, obviously, and saw with the governor's role with the 2.3% COLA for this year. I'm probably less bullish than, I know you pull from reputable sources in terms of the COLA and the out-years. I'm probably less bullish than those are given so much of funding for schools is dependent upon the California economy and given the, given where things are currently, I'm very concerned with funding from a state perspective over the next couple of years. So as we think about the out-year sort of approaches, I want to make sure that we're being sensitive to that. Also knowing that, I believe, we're at about a, is it, we're at about a 7% or 8% reserve. Is that, is that right? If I, and knowing that we, like many school districts, deficit spend, and we've got to keep at least a 3% reserve from a compliance perspective, I'm particularly concerned as we go into the out-years of decrease, of smaller than expected COLAs and that possible impact on our reserve. We are not as well set up as other districts in terms of reserves, which I think on average are in the 20s, which boggles my mind. But we've done a great job, I think, of putting dollars close to students, which is great. But we're at a point where I think we're pretty thin. And so I want to make sure that we've got a plan as we, as we go forward and as we do the budgeting that allows us to get, to make it through what I anticipate being some lean years going forward. So I don't know, just, that was my reaction to everything I saw. You had a lot of the information I saw in terms of what our assumptions were, which I appreciate, but doesn't, gives me confidence that you're on it, still makes me nervous about the state of the economy, knowing so much is dependent upon where the state is.
Go ahead. So in all the years I've been watching our Board meetings and our budget and things like that, I actually feel really solid that we are starting this conversation now with a 7% reserve because I remember, I mean, Kim, I watched you in some Board meetings leading them, and we were looking at maybe negative 7% and other things. It was really rough. And so the work that's been done by the previous Boards and district leadership to kind of pull us to here is great, so I feel like it's a nice jumping off point. You know, I think we could look at how we want to frame things up for moving forward as a Board and kind of what we want to set as our base comfort level, also understanding that sometimes if we set those things and then it's just plain unachievable, that is somewhere that the Boards have been in the past, and that's also, you know, kind of a really fine line we have to walk. So I think it would take a little more conversation. Yeah.
Anyone else?
I just had a question.
Yes.
The special ed increase of $400,000?
Yes.
Where is that coming from?
So basically, that's an anticipated increase in the number of students that will have IEPs that's going to require additional supports. It's, it's known across the nation, actually, that special education funding is not sufficient with the requirement that we must fund, you know, whatever the IEP recommendations are. So that makes it more challenging from a fiscal perspective, but we just wanted to share out that this is what we're anticipating that cost to be.
I think, looking at that, Trusty Inkless, it would be really awesome if we talked more about how we could offset those mandated IEP services. And I think it's a kind of a culture shift in the district and at our school sites into how do we incorporate more into our Tier One instead of jumping all the way to Tier Two, Tier Three, as we talk about? And I think we could be savvy in those areas. Yeah, I mean, I just, I was just having a conversation with a speech and language pathologist about TK students because often, these kiddos would be in preschool, and even though they are eligible to receive district services, many parents are like, no, it's too much, I have to take them out of school and put them here and put them there. But now that they're in our TK program, we're identifying what could be just sort of supported naturally in a classroom. So we were talking a lot about, hey, could we instead use you as a push-in service with our youngest classes so that we could try and really assess in the environment and do that without just adding on, you know, she has to do the, what is, what is it, the DRDP? All these acronyms. Anyways, you know, for every student, which is hours upon hours of extra work, and that's not student-facing, that's just the assessments and the reporting. So I just think that like when we're looking at this from a Board perspective and we're looking at those dollars, then there's very tangible ways that we could ask our district leadership to start reassessing those, those processes.
I agree, and I think it's something that perhaps when we look to the next school year in our Board study sessions, I'd love to do a sort of deeper dive into the budget and looking at things as you've just described, Trusty Davidson, about, you know, where we can save money if we're having increases in special education needs and, you know, we've got our new special education coordinator, for example, like what can we do to mitigate those increasing expenses? So I think that's something to really consider for next school year. Thank you so much. And also thank you for explaining it in a way that makes sense, and all of the graphics are really easy to understand, so I appreciate that.
Great.
Anybody else? Okay, we're going to close this item and move on to 10B, which is the bond program update.
So on that note, I'd like to invite Chris Thomas, our consultant now, to provide the update.
And great job to our new CBO on presenting a very complicated budget, so anyway. Tonight, I just wanted to provide an update on kind of where we are with some of the stuff going on with our bond program. And so as you know, we have two existing bonds that the current Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, or CBOC, has been working on. We're meeting with them again on Thursday. They're going to be finalizing their annual report, and we anticipate they'll be bringing that back and presenting it to you in June. So we're excited about getting that annual report completed. In addition, you know, we have passed Measure L in November, and so there's a whole master facilities planning process that has started. There's a committee starting to look at it. And there's a couple other pieces of, that we need to bring forward, and one of them will be a resolution that we'd like to bring to you in June that really talks about establishing tax rates for the upcoming bonds that we anticipate selling in the '25-'26 fiscal year. So as you know, and some of you may be newer to this process, but the voters authorize a bond measure, which they've done very generously, and then we have to come up with selling or issuing bonds so that we actually get the cash. So when the voters approve it, we don't get the cash at that time. We have to come up with a project list and then determine how much do we sell. Usually, for a $64 million bond, you would do it in two or three different issuances. And so in '25-'26, we plan on working on what level of bonds do we need to issue and coming back and looking at that. In anticipation of that, because this is a tax rate extension bond measure, then it's going to be important that the county look at those tax rates and prepare for them, in a nutshell. So we'll be bringing more information and a resolution to you in June so that we can then provide that to the County Board of Supervisors. We also are working on getting ready for really continuing to have this process to determine what is, what is our need. We know we have this huge needs assessment that was done May of last year, that was presented to you, I think, on May 14th. That far exceeded what our bond measure is going to provide us. And we know we have a master plan that was completed in 2016. A lot of information has changed since then. For example, transitional kindergarten, we now have this 20 to 2 ratio, which is much smaller than it was in 2016. So that creates the potential for space needs. So we are working on doing a request for qualifications proposal process so that we can identify an architectural and engineering firm to help us with updating that master plan, incorporating in the needs assessment, and really helping us prioritize what projects that we need to start working on and how we're going to allocate that $64 million in addition to some of the state moderation money that we've received. So that process is underway. We have a draft of the RFP that we're working on, and we'll be identifying the next steps to kind of get that out, so. And, and the Board at that point, we can actually identify more than one architectural firm to work on. And that is really required under state procurement laws. So anyway, that's our next step, and we're starting to develop that process right now. So we just wanted to give you an update on kind of where we are. Any questions?
Appreciate the heads up. Thank you. And anybody here have a comment? We can take public comment. There's no one online. Anybody on the Board have questions or comments? Something to look forward to. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right, oops. Moving on to our review in action, we are going to have the Resolution Number 24-25-23, Certified Assignments Outside Credential Authorization. I think that is...
Yes. Sorry.
Sorry about that. This is, I think we did one of these earlier, like a month or two ago. This is for a person who's been teaching for many, many years, this course, but with changes to, you know, credentialing and so on, that person does not have the credential for the course specifically. But in our resolution, we're saying we believe that this person is qualified, and so we also call it a local assignment option. And so that's what we're doing here.
Thank you. It's very straightforward. Go ahead.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2024-25-23. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that resolution, do we have to do a roll call for a resolution, actually? Yes, we do.
And I guess, was there any comment?
No, that's what I tried to do, yes. I thought you were going to make a comment.
No, no, not me.
Were there any comments? No. I didn't see anybody with a raised hand online either, so we can go ahead and just do a roll call for the resolution.
Thank you. Student Trusty Shepherd.
Yes.
Student Trusty Deb Dar.
Yes.
Trusty Inkless.
Yes.
Trusty Khan.
Yes.
Trusty Davidson.
Yes.
Vice President Mahoney.
Yes.
President Hopwood.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that resolution passes, and now we can move on to 11B, our Independent Contractor Services Agreement between AUSD and JJ Lynch Consulting for the ELOP.
Yes, we are recommending to the Board to approve the independent contract for JJ Lynch. Primarily, she is advising us actually on building out a more robust expanded learning opportunities program, and we need her expertise. We've left some unspent funds kind of like on the table. We want to avoid that and make sure that we're reaching out to all of the students that need it the most. And so with her, I'm recommending that the Board approves it.
Great, thank you. And again, we'll take public comment if there is any. Seeing anybody on the Board have any questions or comments?
So my comment was just that on page two, it says, "Provide services under this agreement April 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2025," and we are, you know, in May. It would have been great to have a contract like this in advance when we actually, because, I mean, clearly, this indicates that we are already working with this individual, and while that is, might have been time-sensitive and necessary, this is something that should have come to the Board in advance because otherwise, it kind of defeats the purpose of us being a Board and being able to direct the district. And I only point this out because in the past, we had a history of doing this often. Not upset with you or anything. I totally understand that this happens and it's necessary and work needs to get done, but just that, just for the future, I hope that we can get these in advance.
Any other comments or questions?
I just wanted to point out, I had to read through it really, really carefully. Not that I don't with lots of things, but like double-read this one because I was, I was really wondering, I was like, wait, we're already contracted with the YMCA. Some of us have raised that as something we'd like to reassess, so I was like, oh, are we doing this? What's going on? So I had to read really carefully that if we don't spend these funds by June 30th, they just disappear. And so totally understand that. Did we get information that that was going to happen like quickly, or was that something that sort of surprised us?
It's, for the most part, was somewhat surprising. We didn't end up, I guess, like providing, we didn't maximize basically the number of, the amount of programming we could have offered actually to the students that should have had the services.
I want to say, I think this might have been something that was lost in all the transitions because I think we did know that we were underserving and that we were trying to focus on a smaller population to try to make it better because I think there were concerns in previous years that were raised by the Board around whether or not our students were getting the best quality, just, education in these spaces because it's supposed to be, you know, beyond the classroom setting. And I think in our first review of the, like, just the schedule and what kids were learning and with, you know, I'll just use myself as an example, like other parents that had kids in the program and my kid was in the program and like what we were really seeing. And while, yes, there was improvement, I think part of the improvement piece came with, we need to make the size smaller so we can focus on a smaller group. But I think, you know, between trying to focus on a smaller group and making this better, but also all of the transition, I think that's where some of these things just kind of slipped out of our, you know, just, just slipped out. And, but I am hoping that this helps us, put us on a better path, especially for next year's contract, because I think there's still, at least for me, remains a lot of questions on if this program is serving the students in the way that we need them, we need the program to.
Yeah, I think I would agree, probably some things got lost in transitions. Also, I do want to just name that the way the law is written, we have to provide the, we cannot have a waiting list. And so part of the work that I've been doing is cleaning up some of our systems and cleaning up some of the maybe misunderstandings we've had in the past, and I think that's, that's part of it. And so, yes, I think we were a bit surprised by the fact that we were going to leave a lot of money on the table that can serve our students. And so for that reason, we did immediately jump to getting some support around this, knowing that we needed to, to make some decisions quickly so we wouldn't lose the funding. I will say another reason that, something that we're working out for next year is that part of the, part of the reason why we've had to keep it small is because of the space issues and constraints, and so that's something we're working with our union leaders and union members on to ensure that next year, there's more space for our kids to actually be served.
I think this is just, we're using this, I know Trusty Khan and I have raised it many times, as sort of like the diving board for the ELOP program, but just so we get it all out there, this summer, we'd asked to look at another provider and those things, and it was just with all those transitions, we were told, no, we're going to stick with this. So I would really love for us, now that we have this consultant working and this bit of funding, I mean, if we needed a little bit more, I would support that personally to figure out how we could best execute this for the next, like, full years and those to come. When we started this program, the YMCA was kind of like the only option. And I just wonder, you know, is it the best? They, they really sold themselves as understanding this program, understanding what needed to happen, being able to work with us. And so I just think that this is a great opportunity for us to explore that. With that, I move that we approve...
I have a question.
Oh, sorry. Never mind.
Sorry. So are we saving the $475,000 by spending the 25, or are we losing that $475,000? Did I read it correctly? If we don't spend the five...
We are saving it. We are saving it.
By spending the 25?
By spending the 25,000 from that budget.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions?
Sorry, one last comment. I don't know if this would fall under this individual's contract, but I think it would be nice to get better, cleaner data on the program itself and is it serving the students in the way that we need it to? I think that's something that we've asked for multiple times. And I think we've only gotten like qualit... Qualitative, not qualitative data. Yeah, we've only ever gotten qualitative data. Sorry. The dyslexia is not helping. But I think while qualitative data is great, we also want to see what the numbers are actually showing us too, especially in comparison to our other statewide testing and all that good stuff. Sorry.
Definitely a future agenda item.
Yes.
And I also feel though, that this is still a relatively new program.
Yeah.
And also, this was a question of use it or lose it. And the money has to be spent, if I'm not mistaken, by that point. So there was no time to waste. So I really appreciate everyone's efforts to sort of jump in and figure this out because this is a huge opportunity for our students to have these resources. So I appreciate all the work that's been done. Thank you. If there are no other comments or questions, we could move, make a motion.
I move to approve the Independent Contractor Service Agreement between AUSD and JJ Lynch Consulting for ELOP.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. That contract passes. So now, that's our final review and action. So we are now moving on to our superintendent and board member reports.
Good evening, trustees, President Hopwood, and members of the audience. Tonight, I actually prepared kind of a written statement that I'm going to read. So while we do have two more board meetings left after this one, this is actually our last board meeting before our school year is officially over. So I do want to start by just congratulating our students, especially our graduating seniors. I'm so proud of all of you and all of the hard work that you've put in. I cannot wait to see what you do in your lives. I know it's going to be amazing. And I can't believe that I've only been the superintendent here for six months. It feels like much, much, much longer. And I do want to highlight some of the key shifts that I've made since I've been here. I know that I sometimes can be accused of going fast with, with things that are important and that I want to do for kids. But I also want to make sure that everyone is very clear that it's with strategy and with, there's a, there's a reason for it. And one of the things I've been really focused on in this time is systems and making sure that our systems are set up for success for the future. And so some of the things that feel like they're maybe going fast this spring are in service of setting up systems for next year so that we can be really strategic in the work that we're doing. Some of the things came up tonight, thinking about how we're ensuring that we have really clear sight into the, into the crystal ball of the future around our budget, but making sure that we're making good decisions with that and perhaps increasing our reserve if possible. Also, thinking about how we're using our space, our time, and our other, our human resources, really strategically. Trustee Davidson, you brought that up, just in terms of how do we think about what we're doing so that maybe we have fewer students who actually need special education services because we've figured out things earlier on to support them? So just readjusting and rethinking. And a lot of the things that, that I've been working on over the last six months have really come straight from what I've heard very loud and clear from the community and students specifically. And so just thinking about, you know, some of those things, like as CBO Lindu Wu highlighted tonight, we've started to do what we're calling site-based budgeting, which ensures that students, that the, that the decisions that are being made around the budget are actually impacting the students themselves. And that site leadership, which includes principals, but also includes staff and families, are making those decisions and it's transparent. Also, we've implemented two critical committees that are going to help us make good decisions in the future. One of those being the Technology Committee, which has now met twice. We have community members, staff on that committee. And we also have our Facilities Committee, which also has met twice and is a combination of staff and, and community. And I should, I should mention, students are on those committees as well, which is exciting. And again, the goal is to really support transparent and inclusive decision-making around our essential priorities and using our fiscal resources as well as our other resources really well. So looking into next year, there's, there's some shifts. We're, as I've mentioned before and I've presented before, we are doing some reorganization of our district office to enhance responsiveness and collaboration. We are also working to ensure that our instructional leadership teams at our school sites are meeting with each other across the district as well as within their own school sites next year. So ILTs or instructional leadership teams will consist, will continue to do what they've done at school sites before. But we're also going to use some of our time and some of our, our best thinking to organize, to do some more coherence across the schools by creating what's called an all ILT. We are working on a new schedule, elementary schedule that I'm calling the equitable, equitable schedule. Sorry, I'm a little tongue tied right now. It's been a challenge. It's been, we want to make sure that we're doing it well and in collaboration with our teachers. And we also know that in order, we, we needed to do it now because budgeting is happening now and because there are implications to the budget for doing this. And so it creates a schedule that allows for all students to receive in a grade level, their tier two or their maybe second teaching or accelerated teaching at the same time. So more resource, people, time can be placed into that grade level at one time. Again, with the goal and the hope that we're maybe avoiding the need to have more students receive individual education plans. And again, of course, if students need that, that's what we're going to provide. Again, with that schedule, what's exciting is we were able to use our Prop 28 money in such a way that now we're increased visual and music, visual arts and music for our students, first through fifth grade, which is, which is actually very much in line with what I heard people wanted during my listening campaign. And next year, we still have some, I mean, there's a lot of work to do, but we are going to be focused in some of our efforts. And so one of the things that we are going to be working on is creating an actual true strategic plan, a 2025 through 28 strategic plan. We have kind of an emerging plan coming that is definitely informing our LCAP or our Local Control Accountability Plan, which we'll be presenting next week through our vital signs present, or next week, next month, through our vital signs presentation. But the thing with, with this, with this emerging plan is that we also need to stay really focused. And so next year, we're going to be focusing on a K through, perhaps six, definitely K through five literacy adoption. And we're also going to be pulling a team of cross-site, cross-grade level folks together to come up with a really strong math vision. So a PK through post-secondary math vision that will help align what we're doing around mathematics instruction so that in, not next year, but the year after, when we can focus in on math, because I've heard that often, when are we going to focus on math? Well, we want to have a plan to get to math. And part of that is coming together and having a clear vision. So that group is going to work on that. And I just want to recognize that, you know, change isn't easy. It challenges routines, it challenges our comfort zones, and it requires us to maybe confront what maybe hasn't been working well. And part of what's exciting about coming into a new district is I also have fresh eyes and I can see things maybe in a way that others hadn't seen because I'm new. That said, I don't want it to feel like everything is just up and, you know, upended or that things haven't been going well. Albany Unified School District is known for being an amazing school district for a reason. People move to Albany for the schools. That is so clear. And so, so much is going well. But again, systems and how we use what we have is something that I, that I'm really working on and I just want to name that. So it's definitely essential for us to continue to move together towards some things that might feel a little uncomfortable. Discomfort's okay. And it's also really important that, that I stop and take time to listen and hear from the community. So I will continue to do that. So to, to that end, I do want to address that one of the things that is, is part of who I am is my unwavering commitment to standing against hate, harm, and discrimination. And I truly believe that every single student, staff member, family member, regardless of race, ethnicity, national origin, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, religion, disability, family background, or anything else, each and every person deserves to feel safe, valued, and supported in every classroom, on every walkway on the way to school, and throughout our entire city and school district. And so for me, that is the foundation of what's, what a truly inclusive community is. And I'll continue to focus on that. Will I always get it right and perfect? Absolutely not, because I am a human and I am growing and I'm learning. And I hope that I can start to build the trust of the community to know that if I say that something was harmful to somebody, that there's trust, that that was actually true. And I get that that's not always going to be the case and I, and I'm, and I'm okay with It's not just a goal for me that every student feels a sense of belonging, but it is absolutely the work that I need to do. And so with that, I'm going to continue to do my best in the upcoming year, in the upcoming school year, to ensure that what we're doing is really creating the kind of school system that Albany is known to be, continuing to hold space for that excellence and that thriving community. But doing it with that sense of, of care and belonging for one another. So, thank you.
Thank you. And also, can I just say that I really appreciate all you're doing and your first six months. And yeah, I think a lot of people don't see the amount of work that goes into the job that you do. So very appreciated. Thank you. So, board member reports. Would you like to start? Dana, would you like to begin?
I didn't have a board report prepared, but I do want to say thank you for all, all of that information. It's really helpful to sort of understand all the changes. And also, it reminded me, when you brought up the math program, I don't know how public this is, but I can tell you that the 11th graders did exceptionally well on the CASP math test. And some of them are going out to celebrate tomorrow with bagels. So that is one positive in our Albany math program when it gets so many other dings. So, thank you.
I forgot my entire report, but the one thing I do remember that I wanted to present during the last meeting that I wasn't here for is the first week of May, I believe, or second week of May, we had Teacher Appreciation Week. And I just wanted to give a huge shout out and thank you to Ocean View PTA President Jolene Gassman for putting together the most incredible Teacher Appreciation Week. Like, we had teachers emailing us all week. We had AUSD district staff showing up to be a part of the teacher appreciation lunches and everything too because of how incredible it was put together. It was extremely thoughtful in that the team, which was her and I actually, we looked at local businesses that were actually where parents of Ocean View students, and we were able to partner with them to bring, you know, just, just highlight not just their business, but also appreciate our teachers in that way. And I think it really brought a sense of just appreciation for all that is Ocean View, from door decorations to food to, you know, making sure that we're also thinking of our paras, our custodial staff. Like, every staff member at Ocean View was just beaming that entire week. I have never seen such huge smiles on like every staff member ever at one period, especially because that was the week of open house too, and you know how stressed teachers are then. So just wanted to give a huge, huge shout out to everyone that participated in making that happen, especially our potluck, which is always the highlight. But it was an incredible week. And thank you to our teachers for everything that they do. Just needed to say that.
I don't, I'm glad we're not doing all the site level reports because this is, this is, this is a better failure, like highlighting students and all the good things. And I just wanted to say, you know, there's like all, there's always these little like micro fires that are going on in any part of life and in any school district and all of those things. And I think that as a community and as a board, we can take all of those as learning experiences and say, hey, this one did not go the way we were hoping. Next time, here's what we're putting in place to make sure that, you know, this and this is happening. And, and as with any time, it's a learning process for, you know, this group of people, the other groups of people. And so I just think that we'll reflect, we'll have conversations, and we'll put some plans in place for what happens as our next steps. And, you know, just clarifying our communal understanding around, this is sort of our boundary here or our boundary here, and we're going to just let those be okay. And so I appreciate, you know, hearing from everyone about their perspectives, but I also think that people should hear that we are also reflecting as this group.
Speaking of learning, so coming from the private sector, I've been asked by many what I've learned during my time on the board so far. And when chatting with some of those same people, to be honest, I found that many of them don't understand how schools are funded. So I'd like to take this opportunity to talk about why finances in public school are hard. In California, school districts like Albany primarily get their funding from the state. Last year, we got about 80% of our dollars from the state, 18% of the funding from our local parcel task, and about 1.5% from the federal government. And these are rough numbers, but the headline is that we have very little or even no control over revenue. And generally, the amount of revenue increases by small amounts per year. And we already heard about, next year, it'll look like about 2.3% from the state. Unfortunately, as we all know, the cost of everything is going up. And often, these are not things that the district can control. When we look at the cost of utilities or healthcare benefits, all of these costs are increasing much more than 2% a year. And that's why districts like Albany consistently have to make hard choices. Not between good ideas and bad ideas, but which very select ideas we can afford. And until we fund public education at the state and national level with dollars commensurate with the importance of education, this won't continue to be the case.
Thank you so much. I would like to, just because this is the last board meeting of the school year, although not for us of the, of the school year, of the year, just want to share my, my appreciation for everyone here, for the people who show up in our audience, the people in the district office, all of the, the one person? No, obviously not. We've had plenty of people here tonight, actually, and I appreciate those people too and their, and their advocacy and their engagement. But also really people here. And, you know, we're not perfect, we make mistakes, but I have learned that everyone here is really well-intended and really wants to serve and, and just help our students. So anyway, big appreciation to everyone here. Thank you. I also just want to mention that I went to the open house at Cornell and I appreciated all those teachers who put on a great open house. I popped into Amanda Silas's classroom, lots of amazing art, and to Tobias Bodine's Little Learner's Classroom. And I just enjoy going to see those events. We have lots of events coming up with many promotion and commencement ceremonies, so check out the calendars just to, if people have an interest in going to those. And also, I just want to highlight this celebration. It's the Pride Celebration. It's going to be on Sunday, which is June 1st, between 2:00 and 4:00 PM at Cornell Elementary. So it's organized by Albany's pride, which is the LGBT... So it's organized by Albany's Pride, which is the LGBTQIA+ advocacy group for AUSD. So, everyone is welcome at that. And I think that's it for me. So, we are now going to move on to the matters introduced by the board, the future agenda items, and we've already had a couple of ideas. Ooh, no, you're fine. And so one of them, I'm gonna make a note of this, so we talked about reviewing ELOP, and then there was another, we were talking about budgeting and about the special education piece that came up, and I was having that in mind for a future board study session. Is there anything else? No other future items? Okay.
Well, I think it would be, I think we've had a lot of conversations around it, and there was some mention of it. Just our safety updates and really, like, around our schools, safety updates. I know we had a safety task course before, and the students brought up some things, so I'd love for us just to highlight that.
I think, I don't think it needs to be a board agenda item, but just would love to see an update on the food at the elementary level. It's basic sustenance, we need to make sure our kids are fed. It makes, it goes a long way, you know, so.
That's great, thank you. But really, props to Chef Sabina, because the orange chicken sounds like... Yeah. Okay. So if there are no more future agenda items, we're gonna move on to, we're about to have our closed session, so we'll take public comment on our closed session items. If anybody would like to make a comment, either virtually or here. And I am not seeing anyone. So we are now going to adjourn closed session, and then we will report back afterwards. The time now is 7:50. Thank you.
...
Okay, so we have adjourned closed session. We've reconvened to open session. It's 9:24pm and this is to report that the board took no action in closed session and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.